Steve Remus, he lives over in Redmond. Ted is not only a good guy, he's gonna be a good community member for us here in Russell Springs. So Ted, we're glad to have you here tonight to lead us in prayer, but we're also glad to have you here in the city of Russell Springs. So he's gonna look, we stand with us, Neil Edison, Brian and David Blake, you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we're so grateful, Lord, this evening for your blessings. Thank you for the privilege of being called your child. And Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to meet together as a community. We pray that you intervene in our lives, Father, that you mold us and shape us into the person Lord you have us to be. Lord, according to your word, you said if we would acknowledge you in all of our ways, that you would direct our paths. So Father, tonight, in the way of this meeting, in the way of the decisions that are made, we acknowledge you. We pray you intervene and direct our steps, minister to our community. Father, I feel so honored to be part of the city of Russell Springs, Lord, and the friendships that I have made and the ones that I'm going to make, Lord, I'm going to cherish. I just thank you for that. We pray for the mayor and the councilman, pray for each person that's participating tonight. We pray that you give us wisdom and understanding. Father, just be glorified through all of our efforts. We thank you today for Jesus and the old rugged cross and all that we receive because of him. We know that because of him, we have an open door to come to you. So Father, right now, have your way, be glorified through our efforts and let our community shine. May we have love for our neighbor, give us the right attitude and just be glorified through all of our actions and efforts. We thank you for Jesus, have your way, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, David.
Pleasure it handle we heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David. I call the city of Russell Springs City Council meeting June 10th to order. The first thing, Chris, give a roll call, make sure we got a call.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Hope.
Here, sorry.
Mr. Hope. Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Blakey.
Here.
Mayor, do you have a call?
Thank you, Chris. First thing is the acceptance of the minutes. I need a motion to accept the minute.
I don't have a motion to accept the minutes.
Sure, I need a second.
Second, yeah.
David. Okay, we got any discussion on them at all? Should've had them in your packet. If not, Chris.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Reset, who's the last one?
Mr. Hope.
Mr. Hope, it reset on, thank you. Motion carries, sir.
Next thing is the acceptance of cash disbursements, financial statements to pay the bills. I need a first and a second on it.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Thank you, Tommy, you need a second. Sure, a second. Any discussion on the bills? At all, any of them? All right, Chris.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Thank you, Chris. Chris has got a new thing up there to work where he can call it. He pushes a button and goes different every time, so everybody ain't the same way every time. So Chris, thank you for that, he's getting used to it. The next thing is old business, and we do have something on old business. We give the award out at high school for scholarships and Abby Grant was the girl that they picked and Colin Darnail is the boy, Colin, has come up tonight and Colin come up here and received you. Thousand dollar award come out here to me, we'll... I don't know if y'all know it or not, but this was one of our running backs in football. And he's a nice young man, I tell you, and he's going over to Lindsey. He said, "We're gonna get to keep him around close enough to go watch him." So if y'all wanna see some, a good running back play football, right here he is, and we're awful proud of him. His dad is, his dad's Anthony Darnail at the high school, which has took a new job over to Dyer County, but now we've still got, he's a Laker, once a Laker, always a Laker. Colin, we appreciate you, we thank you, appreciate you.
Appreciate it. Meanwhile, thank you all.
All right, thank you. It's all the old business, new business.
I have something, I don't know if it's old business or new business. You know, we gave money last month to the honor guard and I think maybe we, whatever budget this week, maybe we should give money to the DAV as well. Would that be old or new business?
It could be old.
Well, it could be old, it could be new, but I just thought I'd bring that.
Well, do you wanna, how much you wanna donate or do you wanna put that in a motion or?
Well?
No.
There's a motion on the floor.
You got a motion, Sherri?
You were sending the motions.
Well, I mean, if they wanna talk about it, but I thought we'd just do the same amount we had done for honor guard possibly. Usually you make the motion and then you have a second, you ask for discussion. Well, I hadn't talked to anybody else about this, but this was just a matter of, I've been thinking about it. But I think Mr. Skaggs has commented on it possibly. But I don't make the motion.
You got a motion, I need a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second from Tommy? All right, now we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Have we ever donated money to them before? We haven't, have we? Now it's time to discuss it.
What day?
We've never donated money to them before, have we?
Not that I know of.
I don't think we have.
Not that I know of.
Did they ask for money or do you know?
No, well, if they did, I'm not aware.
Honor guard didn't either.
I'm not aware of it, anybody asked. But I, because I am DAV and I'm not trying to start a problem with Sherri, I appreciate the thought and stuff like that, but I would prefer it not happen.
You don't have to vote on it, Larry, or you can vote, he can vote against it. He can vote no if he wants to.
I'm getting notorious for voting against everything, Tim, I'd like to have something.
I mean, you all don't need the money or?
I'm sorry.
You don't need?
Yes, they do need, but because of the situation, Sherri, I don't even know how to explain what I'm feeling, you know? How about me just abstaining, not, not, is that all right? And I do sincerely appreciate what you've done.
Give me a word.
Mr. Skaggs.
Abstain.
Abstain. Abstain. Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Before I vote, I'd like to know how much we plan on giving them?
Well, I, we gave 500 to the...
That is correct.
The honor guard and, I mean, I'm confused, but I think they are both sort of representative of the same thing. And if we're gonna do for one, we probably should do for the other, for the tuthther.
I agree with that.
Just my opinion, I mean, don't they do basically the same thing, Larry?
Yes, ma'am, we, we do the same thing. We do military honors, we do, we try to do community events, stuff like that, like flag raising ceremonies. We done one, ain't been too long ago for, what's that church?
Oh, yes.
Huh?
Oh, yes.
David said.
The motion carries.
Anyway, that's what it's all about.
Motion carries 500 with the one abstain, okay? The next thing on the budget, I mean, the next thing on the agenda is we got a real nice lady here. Regina, I'm gonna give you the floor after introducing, she's Somerset Community and Technical College. And she's gonna come over and talk to us a little bit, and after she gets done, I'm gonna show you what they can do. Your, the floor is yours, Ms. Regina.
Eddie Saban, the best for last, so probably. I'm gonna let you guys pass these around, there's a packet for everybody. And I'll start by introducing myself. I know, I see some familiar faces that I've known since I was knee-high to a grasshopper over here. My name's Regina Hogan, I'm the director of the Somerset Community College Russell and Casey Center. So, close by, near home. I was a Russell County High School girl, a Laker, still a Laker. And I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about what Somerset Community College did for me. I graduated high school in 2000, so quite a while back. And I spent two years at Somerset Community College when they still offered classes at the Russell County High School at night. And then I transferred to Lindsey Wilson College, finished up my undergraduate degree there, and my graduate degree is from WKU. But going back to those couple of years at SCC, those years allowed me to graduate from a private college with a bachelor's degree and pay off my student loans within six months of graduating. I wouldn't have been able to do that had I not started out with Somerset Community College. And I feel like a lot of times it's easy for us to have a preconceived notion that community college has to be a plan B. It's just what students do if they gone off somewhere else and that didn't work out and they come back. But my message to you all is that that isn't at all the case. There are so, so many benefits to starting out at a community college, whether you want to earn a hard technical degree or credential, or if you wanna eventually transfer and graduate from another college or university. There are definitely, definitely benefits there. And the other day, Eddie and Jeremy paid us a visit over at the Charlene Harris Educational Center and one of the things that I kept hearing was, wow, we didn't know this was here, we didn't know you all did this, we didn't know you all did this. So part of the information that I passed out to you is a little bit about all of the things that we do over here at the Russell Center. Of course, we host a variety of Gen A classes that students can take. And we also host our Skills U Department, and they help students get free GEDs. And then we host the Upward Bound Program. Right now, we have about 30 high school students that are coming over to campus in Russell Springs from Lincoln County right now to attend our Upward Bound Summer Program. And that's part of the program that does our 3D printing and virtual reality. And those are some of the really cool things that Jeremy and Eddie got to experience with us the other day. In addition to that, one of the initiatives that we're most excited about is our partnership with the local Russell County ATC, the Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center. I'm still getting used to that new name, to go with that stunning new facility. We're gonna offer a couple of technical courses over there at the ATC this fall. Those are gonna be during the evening, and we're gonna offer HVAC, electricity, welding, and a nurse aid course for students. And then in the spring, we're also gonna add an EMT course that'll be available. So those are just a few of the things that we have on the horizon, that we wanna make sure that you all are aware of. Like I said, I'm a Russell County girl from way back, so I'm really glad, after a long tenure in higher education at private colleges, to be able to come back home and put that work into the city where I was raised. So if you all have any questions, need any more information, we're happy to host you all on campus sometime for a campus tour. And with that, I'll let Eddie show you the parting gift that we sent him away with the other day. We've affectionately called him Little Eddie.
They made a 3D figurine, and I mean, I'm telling you, look, I sat down in a chair for about, I don't know what, Jeremy, minute maybe?
Maybe.
Maybe a minute, and they went around me and just scanned me, and then when they got done, they come out with a figurine, and I mean, I'm telling you, and that's why I thought it was important for her to come. We need to let the community know what we've got here, because they got simulators for airplanes. You wanna get into any kind of flight instructor, I mean, they've got, it's amazing what all they got up there. We didn't have, we didn't have, I could spend all day over there, I mean, it was, it was awesome. I've got a figurine to myself, it's not for sale, there only one of them made, and they're gonna break the mold now, so they won't be no more. Anybody got any questions for Ms. Regina?
It was really neat, yes.
Does that mean he's famous?
Well, he has an action figure, so it's official now.
But if, you know, I think that would be a good idea, Regina, if we could get together sometime and all of us come over and tour and just let, let us, let them see partially what me and Jeremy say.
We'd be happy to do that, we can make that happen, Sherri.
It's, it's amazing.
We'll put him on display.
And there we go.
I know, I just don't hear you, the surgery tech, do you have to go to the Somerset Campus to take that?
The full surge tech program, yeah, is at the Somerset Campus, but students can get started with some of the Gen A requirements over here at the Russell Center.
Wish they had this when I got here.
The college offers over 100 degrees and credentials altogether, and so, so many of those students can get started with right here in Russell without having to leave home.
So is that the same thing with your technical and career, like the diesel mechanic aviation is all in Somerset?
Right, right, that's what it is, Somerset.
But you can get Gen A all the way over here.
But the EMT program's gonna be here.
Yes, we're gonna offer, we're offering it right now. We did it this past spring here at the Russell Center, and then next spring, we're gonna rotate it back and offer it over at the ATC. So exciting things going on. I've been here since February, and that's been a personal goal of mine, to try to spread the word here at home and make sure that people know all of the things that we're doing, so we can continue to grow. And I want Russell Springs to be a college town, we have a college, we can be a college town, so that's our goal. So anything that you all can do or that we can do to help you, we sure appreciate.
Regina, Matt, what you all, you all know now?
Oh, my goodness. At the Russell Campus, we had right under 100 last year.
Have COVID plug in.
Yes, yes, COVID was tough for that. A lot of students switched to virtual, of course, and I'm sure a lot of students will want to continue to do at least portions of their work virtually, but now that things are opening back up, we wanna get as many folks as we can back into the centers and on the campus.
Do you have any projected numbers for this upcoming year?
I don't, I don't, but I mean, I'm hopeful that we'll continue to grow there.
That's awesome.
All right.
Maybe, Ms. Regina, when it's over, you can get a brand there, the newspaper, he can put you a good spot if I do.
There we go, that sounds perfect.
We need to get, get you out there.
Yes, that's exactly what we wanna do.
And we thank you for coming tonight, if you need anything from the city, just yell at us.
I appreciate it, we appreciate you all.
This was an extra one, Regina, I didn't know.
Thank you, Larry.
All right, next thing on the agenda is the interlock and road agreement with the Russell County Fiscal Court. I'm gonna let Chris read that, it's in your packet, and you should, if he brought you iPad, your laptop iPad, you should have it on there.
This is an interlocal road agreement that we enter to and with the 5th District, Magisterial District, and with the Russell County Fiscal Court every year. Interlocal road agreement. This agreement made and entered into binding between the city of Russell Springs and the county of Russell, Kentucky, for the purpose of establishing a system of cooperation between the city of Russell Springs and the county of Russell, specifically for the purpose of maintaining, repairing, paving, and/or the creation of roads within the city of Russell Springs and the Magisterial District Number 5. Whereas the city of Russell Springs is located within the Magisterial District 5 of Russell County, Kentucky, and whereas road infrastructure is necessary for both the citizens of Russell Springs and of Russell County, and whereas the parties here too must cooperate and maintain and create the proper road infrastructure. Now therefore, it is mutually agreed upon in between the parties here, here too, as follows. Number 1, that this interlocal agreement shall be effective July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022. Number 2, that the city and the county shall both cooperate on the maintenance, repair, paving, and/or creation of roads within the city limits of Russell Springs and the Magisterial District Number 5. Within the city of Russell Springs hereby agreeing to accept funding for the Russell County Road Aid to this cooperation. This shall in no way prevent the county of Russell and the city of Russell Springs from other methods of cooperation related to the Russell County Road Aid Fund, adopted by the City Council of the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, at a meeting on the 10th day of June 2021, and on the same occasion, signed in an open session by Eddie Thomas, Mayor of Russell Springs, Kentucky, attested under seal by Christopher Ramsey, the Russell Springs City Clerk, and declared to be in full force and effect, signed by Eddie Thomas, Mayor, Seal, and attested, signed Christopher Ramsey, Russell Springs City Clerk. Also adopted by the Russell County Fiscal Court at a meeting on the 14th day of June 2021, on the same occasion, signed in open session by Gary D. Robertson, Russell County Judge Executive, attested under seal by Kim Fisk, Russell County Fiscal Court Clerk, and declared to be in full force and effect, signed by Larry Holt, Master District Number 5, signed by Gary Robertson, County Judge Executive, Seal, and signed by Kim Fisk, Russell County Fiscal Court Clerk.
I need a motion to...
I make a motion that we accept.
Got a motion, Larry, I need a second.
I'll second.
And that was 10? Was it 10?
Yeah.
I need any discussion on it? Everybody knows what their vote is, I'm okay. Chris, give me a roll call.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, council. The next thing on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance 2021-01, ordinance for the annual budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, and that was sponsored by Councilwoman Tommy Hope. And Chris, do you wanna, we don't take a vote on that tonight or we don't discuss it? We'll discuss it later on, so do you wanna just go through the budget here?
First reading of ordinance 2021 dash zero one. An ordinance adopting the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Whereas annual budget proposal and message have been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, now therefore being ordained by the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, Section 1 of the annual budget of the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022, is hereby adopted as follows. Bear with me, I'm just gonna read through this as fast as I can. General estimated carryover, 1,451,000. Estimated revenues, 1,540,000 on taxes, license, 799,600. LGA, cleft, grant and arrest fees, 478,000. Franchise fees, 213,000. Other park rent miscellaneous, 351,000. For a total revenue, 2021, 2022, 3,383,000 dollars. With the, when you add the available carryover funds, that is a total revenue, 4,834,000 dollars. The appropriations, general government, 1,560,000. Police department, 1,399,000. Fire department, 268,000. Parks and streets, 945,000. For a total appropriations of 4,173,000 dollars. Estimated fund carryover, 660,000. Utilities, estimated balance forward, 548,000. Estimated revenues, LGA, cleft, grants, 682,000. Charges for services, 3,835,000. Total revenues for 2021, 2022 would be 5,660,000 dollars. Estimated appropriations for water and sewer is 4,662,000 dollars, with an approximate carryover on June 30 of 404,000 dollars. Mutual road aid, carried approximate carryover, 46,000. Incoming revenues for next year, approximately 49,000. For a total of 96,000 dollars in revenue. Expenditures, 96,281, with approximate carryover zero at the end of the fiscal year. Fire department equipment fund, carryover approximate balances, 124,000. LGA, cleft, grants, et cetera, 21,000. For a total of 145,000 in total revenue. Total estimated expenses, 145,000 dollars with zero carryover. Estimated alcohol fund, carryover is 107,000, with approximate revenue income of 210, for a total of 317,000, with estimated revenue expenditures, 317,000 with zero carryover. Drug forfeiture account, estimated carryover, 17,000 dollars. Estimated income of 15,000, for a total of 32,000 in revenue, and a total, an estimated cost of 32,000 in appropriations with a zero carryover on June 30. Russell Springs Development Operation, estimated carryover is 95,000. Estimated revenue was 15,600, for a total of 111,000. On the expenditures is estimated 111,000 dollars with a zero balance at the end of June 30. Cemetery fund, carryover approximately 9,000, 900 dollars. Estimated revenue would be 30,000, for a total of 39,000 dollars in revenue. Approximate appropriations would be 39,000. Water sewer maintenance repair, carryover approximately 205,000, with 180,000 revenue, for a total of 385,000 total appropriation. And estimated expenses was 385,000, for a total of zero dollars at June 30, 2022. And that is the first reading of ordinance 2021 dash zero one.
All right, the next thing on the budget is the first reading of ordinance 2021-02. It's amended ordinance for the annual budget fiscal year 2020 and 2021. And it's sponsored by Councilwoman Sherri Daniels. Chris, will you?
This would be first reading of ordinance 2021 dash zero two. In order to amend the Russell, the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, by estimating revenues and resources, approximating funds for the operation of city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, now therefore being ordained by the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky, Section 1 of the annual budget of the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021, is hereby adopted as follow. And this is where, what we do at the end of the year, it's where we are estimating at the end of the year, and I still have, what, 20 some days left to hit the end of the year mark, so it's, the numbers will still be adjusted at the end of the year, but this is as close as we can get right now. Approximately carryover was 854,000 dollars. Revenue on taxes was 1.7 million. License, 874,000. LGNA, cleft, grants, et cetera, was 481,000. Franchise fees was 209,000. Other park rent and miscellaneous was 206,000, for a total revenue of 3.4 million, with approximate carryover from last year would've been a total of 4,334,000 dollars of revenue. Appropriations for general was 1.2 million. Police department was 1.068. Fire department was 111,000. And parks and streets was 490,000. And those are what we have actually spent, not what was budgeted, that's what it was spent. For a total of appropriation of 2.8 million, with an estimated carryover of 1.4 million dollars. Utilities, estimated balance last year was, carryover was 238,000, with charges and services of 3.7 million. The total revenue of 3.9 million. Expenditures for water sewer was 3.4 million, which left a approximate carryover of 548,000 dollars. Mutual road aid, approximate carryover, 46,000. Through cleft grants and arrest fees, other things in that line item, would've been 51,000 dollars for a total revenue of 98,000. With a appropriation of 53,000, left a approximate carryover of 44,000 dollars. Fire department slash car show, and you'll remember, the council voted last year to combine those two funds into one, was approximately 115,000 dollars. Estimated revenue was 22,000 dollars for a total of 137,000 dollars. Actually expenses on that count was 13,461 dollars, which would bring a approximate total carryover of 124,000 dollars. Alcohol fund, approximate carryover was 66,000 dollars. Uh, alcohol fund, approximate carryover was sixty-six thousand, uh, dollars. Revenue was a hundred and ninety thousand for a total of two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Expenses was a hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred twenty, with approximate carryover of one oh seven, a hundred and seven thousand. Drug forfeiture, estimated balance was twenty-two thousand, with, um, other revenue was seven, seven thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars, for a combined revenue of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy. Uh, total expenses was eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Uh, with, uh, carryover balance would be seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Russell Development Corporation, approximate carryover was ninety-five thousand, with revenues of fifteen thousand, six hundred, for a total of one hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Total expenses was fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine, for a carryover of ninety-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight. Uh, again, the community and trust fund, that was two different funds, community and community cemetery trust. Council voted to combine those two, so it had an estimated, um, carryover of fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighteen, with revenue of thirteen thousand and eighty, for a total revenue of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, with a, uh, expense of eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-four, with an approximate, approximate carryover of nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. Uh, water sewer maintenance and repairs, approximate carryover was forty-six thousand, with, uh, approximate revenue of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, for a total of two hundred and five, uh, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. Uh, we spent zero out of that account, so approximate carryover was two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. Uh, that'd be the first reading, and we will need to do a second reading, uh, hopefully, and, uh, I was gonna talk about that in a minute, and that's your first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero two.
Sorry to bore you with all that, Regina, but we gotta do it every year, so, uh, that's, uh, that's our first reading, and we have a second reading here, we'll see if we can't get it all together here in a few minutes. But needless to say, I think Chris is gonna mention a little bit about all of our, uh-
Oh, yes, uh, all accounts, and I am proud of all the department heads that worked really hard this past year with COVID, so we had to make some adjustments on the fly to our budget and expenditures. Um, we came under budget in every department, and we were about, were a little bit over twenty percent under budget this year. And that was really, you know, I've, I've got a pat the backs of all the department heads, they worked really hard and pulled things together, so I'm proud of them for that.
Yeah, that was something, we got together when we found COVID was here, and they was predicting a thirty percent loss for each city. We pulled all the, uh, department heads and went through the budget, and we just went to work, and it, and it really paid off. I mean, it really paid off, so I'm proud of them too. Okay, has any, any of the council got anything? Anybody, or give the mayor's report plus?
Well, I gotta say something, I, I'm, I'm very tickled with the budget, especially the amended budget, because that just shows to being physically responsible. And I, I mean, we're, we're doing things out here in the public too, and that's a great thing. We're spending money, but yet we're not bankrupted us, and we're getting things done, so I, I'm, I'm proud of, of Chris and, and you, and I'm just proud to be on the council, so, keep it up, boys, keep it up.
Thank you, Tommy, we appreciate that. Anybody else? Alright, on the mayor's report, that's gonna be short and sweet tonight, only thing, I hope y'all seen the cemetery over at, uh, by the fairground. We, that is phase one. We've got the houses tore down, we got it cleaned up, and if you ain't seen it, you might oughta drive by there and look at it, I've had a lot of comments on it, how good it looks, and, uh, that's the first phase of, uh, we, we're gonna try and do three phases, and, uh, that's the first phase we got finished, and I'll compliment Hootie on that for, uh, thank you, Hootie, for getting on that, getting it cleaned up, of course, and working on that. I, I'm, I'm really tickled with how it come along, and I think, I think the community's really gonna be tickled in the next phase, so, uh, we're working on that, so, uh, with that, I need to find out if we can have a special call meeting for Monday morning at seven AM for the second reading of the budget. I know David's gonna be gone, but can all the rest of council, uh, be here where we can, we gotta get it in the paper, if we can, by Monday after noon, so-
This coming Monday?
Yeah.
Let me see if I can get off, but I go in at seven, but, but I'll-
It, it'd just be about ten minutes.
You don't even have to read it, do you?
Yes.
You have to read it?
I just have to give a summary.
Right.
Cause I did a four-week time.
Okay, but anyway.
It won't, it won't last ten minutes, I hope.
Can we come in our pajamas? Can I come in my pajamas?
Yeah, we don't, yeah, that's fine, we don't bring us here. David won't be here anyway, he's going to Florida, so he's, he's taking the vacations, so we're tickled, he's getting to enjoy his little retirement. Rest of us be here working, thank you, David.
Thanks, David.
But, and then the last thing I've got, I wanna congratulate a couple people, uh, I wanna congratulate Ricky Ober on his daughter getting married Saturday, Caitlin. She worked for the city and run the pool over there for years and years, and she was one of the greatest employees, one of the great, her employees we had. And we're tickled for her and Dylan, they'll be married Saturday, and Ricky's getting a son involved. And the next thing is, I was fortunate enough yesterday afternoon to go to Bowling Green to see Bobby Dunbar receive the, uh, Award of Jailer of the Year from the Kentucky Jailers Association, and it was amazing to see how much respect they had for Bobby Dunbar. It's the second time he's won it in two years, and it's really unheard of to win it two times. But, uh, he was, that was just one of the awards he won, he won probably three different, uh, discernment awards, and you know, we oughta be proud of Bobby, if you seen him out, thank him, cause, uh, it was an honor just to be there with him last night and see him, and see the people around him and his family and stuff, so, uh, that's all I got, I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to David.
Second.
Thank you, Council.
Yes, that's it.